Ministry which was very powerful
In the previous verses we understand that many were added unto the Lord
It is said in the hands of the apostles many miracles were worked out And also it is said that the people in one accord had gathered in the palace of Solomon Also it is said that when Peter was walking his shadow fell and many were healed by that When the Lord was working mightily contrary to that the enemy also was working Today there is a proverb in the world if you hide the comb will the marriage be stopped Similarly many thought that if the apostles had been caught and put in captivity the ministry will be stopped Saying that is said in the eighteenth verse as the apostles are there the miracles will happen and they put them in the prison Only where the devil works against the people of God the miracles occur there Wherever there will be struggle there will be the shout of victory heard Where sickness comes the Lord starts healing there Where we find staggering we can find the Lord making them steadfast Where there is storm we can see the Lord silencing that We can see where the doors are closed we can see the Lord opening Where death succor we can see the Lord quickening them back to life In the sight of the man it may be impossible but in the sight of the Lord it is the beginning of miracle Glory be to the holy name of the Lord When a problem starts you should understand the Lord also has started working If confusion comes in you you should understand that the Lord of peace is going to come there How many of you can believe so Since I am saying these words at least a few hands are raised Had I not spoken these words none would have put up the hands Where the devil starts his work the Lord also begins his work there That you should always believe If struggle starts it is sure the Lord will descend there We know about the period where the Israelites were in bondage for four hundred years And they were agreeing with it And they accepted the wages given to them Also started worshipping the alien gods with them When they agreed to all the sins and iniquities God could not work there When the people of God started crying When they started shedding tears God said that I have heard their voice and crying and I have descended to see that If you go along with the struggle God cannot work there If you go along with your sickness God cannot work there If you go along with the sin the holy God cannot do anything there But if you resist the sin If you resist your sickness Certainly without denying him the Lord will reveal himself You note down in your heart and diary When the cry and the shout of the people are heard there will be the voice of the Lord heard there A person had fallen into the water He had gone into some forty feet deep And that is the place where there is a pipe that would suck water to the house But he didn't know that the pipe was below He had gone into the suction of the pipe But it was the mouth was plugged by his body and could not go inside the pipe And on his own breath he cannot come out And he was caught in the place where the water was gushing through the pipe faucet There also he prayed His soul started crying He cried saying Jesus From there the Lord brought him out Jonah says that I prayed from the hell He says that he prayed from the belly of the fish Where the cry of pain comes there you can realize thus a work of the Lord there Apostles were put in the common prison It was a common prison In the same prison you can find various cells According to the crimes committed According to the time of the punishment Different cells will be there In the central prison in Chennai I testified And the prisoners would be opened from each cell as the cattle will be opened out And as the shepherds would use the staff to control the sheep these prisoners also were controlled And afterwards the tada prisoners were opened And those people also were coming there Similarly different prisoners were coming there Even if they would talk there will be problem they were kept aloof like that But here we say that they were put in the common prison This common prison in the spiritual life would come to all people often as a captivity And every man is caught in some common bondage Everybody has some problems If it is house there will be some problems If there are children there will be some problems If there are grown up children there will be different problems If the children are not educated there will be some problems There are some disobedient children there will be some problems There will be variety like that But what the Lord is going to speak to us today The angel of the Lord who opened the doors of the prison Today's message is opening the doors This morning the Lord speaks to you saying my son my daughter I am going to open the doors for your sake For your sake the Lord will open the doors But you have to do one thing for the Lord In this message you can find two parts In the nineteenth and twenty eighth verses there are two words Another one you do that for God God on his part will open all the doors in whatever situation you are But what you have to do You have a long list of expectations from the Lord If you are asked to write in a list you will be writing until the end of the service it will be going on coming in your memory They will be thinking one after the other It's the thought of man But they are very it's a great difficulty for them to do something for the Lord What they have to do for the Lord Speak the words of this life to all people Lord for you he is opening the doors But in this world you have to do for the Lord speaking the words of life to all people Whether you have done so far or not but today this duty falls on you The duty of every saved person is to preach the word of life to all You have to speak the words of life outside That's why the Lord heals you That's why the Lord blesses you That's why the Lord delivers you from the bondage of debts That's why he gives you a job That's why he gives you all comforts and facilities What's the mystery God gives you a lot of goodness Is it that you are a saint than others If it is given you have to do one thing You need not give that money to others Speak the words of life to all Of course all of us are the workers of God Everyone is a missionary You are an instrument revealing Christ If you do not do the ministry the Lord has opened the doors and you don't have the fear of it How many of us speak the words of life today And many of us feel shy Even to carry the Bible we feel shy To put on white and white we feel shy Removing the jewels we feel shy We feel shy and sorrow about removing Then how can we speak the words of life I went to Golden Temple I just to see there I went there Many were praying their God in different manner Means that one group was preaching Sikhism Holding the sword very terribly vehemently preaching But I didn't understand I was watching that but I was happy about it As we shout hallelujah with the sword raising that they also swear something They sang songs And again the message was Vehemently they would speak Just when The museum there And they have thousands of evidence about various matters in the war they had died between the Muslims and Sikhs Just imagine For their religion they are so zealous And they are very vehement in that Even while preaching they raised the sword and all shout Why do I say this Whether it is in or out of season you preach the word of God How many of us do like that God heals can we come and say testimony about that Can we come and testify saying God delivered me Will you say at the workplace that God healed you I mean it's your friends can you say that Without doing these things how can we go to heaven With empty hands we cannot go to heaven we have to earn souls with the perishable And that you may be accepted in the eternity with incorruptible things you earn friends What happened here The angel of the Lord descended He opened the doors of the prison And brought them forth out He said go stand and speak in the temple of the Lord to the people all the words of life Prison denies all diverse problems all have Don't think that only one person has some problem You may think that they are rich and they don't have problems You may think they are workers and they may not have problems You may think that he is healthy and no problem for him But if you inquire after you will find out everyone will be having problems according to their conditions If a man who doesn't have anything he has forty thousand rupees debts the crore patti will have seven crores of debts And he will narrate a big story for that I asked a person Why did you go in the car you could have gone Where they are conducting this bidding or auction Why did you go in a car you don't have a car I ask Only if you go in the car we will be permitted to enter We see people though so live a life for their According to your status and spiritually according to your calling there are diverse problems As the worldly people have struggles according to their condition according to our calling we too have the spiritual struggles What struggle Joseph had And for his dream there was a Why David had a For his anointing Oh Peter had a struggle For the ministry given to him For every problem that comes to you behind that there will be some reason Whatever it may be Today the first door that Lord opens is the door of the Both in old testament and new testament we can find many who were found in prison Of course commoners were in the prison Apostles were in the prison Kings too were in the prison Joseph was in prison Prophet Jeremiah was in the prison Samson was in the prison We can give a list of the people in the prison those who were divine and also fallen But for you those who have come to this meeting the Lord opens the door of your prison And the decree has not come The decree of man didn't open that The worldly government has not released The heaven opens now this morning that's of your prison In Acts sixteen chapter In twenty six and twenty seven Here we can find an incident where the doors of the prison opened When they sang and praised God Immediately the doors were opened And the bands were loosed And they were trumping trumping saying the doors open First of all the Lord gives you the word I am going to open the doors of your bondage With praising you listen to this message With praises you listen to the message of the Lord And it is going to happen to you What does the word of God say When you praise the Lord can open the doors But when you keep quiet you can find the doors closed for you This is the time you have to praise Don't spend your night time in sleep but in praise Don't spend your early hours in sleeping but in praising And create an habit where the Lord will wake you up The prophet says that every morning my Lord wakes me up If you are a child of God certainly he will wake you up Today the Lord who opens the doors of the prison Then what will happen Your bondage will be loosened To Paul and Silas there were bans And their legs were tied in the stocks And the clothes were rented And they were scourged and beaten They were put in the inner prison And their legs were tied with the stocks When the angel of the Lord came all the bands are loosed Do you have bands in your knees And all their bands are not able to lift your hands Do you have struggle in your body and not able to keep yourself This morning the Lord is loose the bands and open the doors for you Today the Lord wants to reveal the doors that he wants to open for you First of all he is going to open the doors of the prison The second door that the Lord is going to open for you First Corinthians Sixteenth chapter This is the second door the Lord is going to open for you
For a great door an effectual is open unto me and there are many adversaries
Here it is said there are many adversaries But at the same time it is said that a great door and effectual is open for me How many of you realize the contrary situation How many of you feel that adverse situation How many of you realize unfavorable situation The Lord is powerful to change this Where you cannot go and work the power of the Lord will penetrate and work there If it is the devil that closes the door it will be God who opens the door And that's why that God we are preaching this morning I mean it's a lot of adverse situation Paul was ministering But what does God do here He has opened a favorable door That's the work of the Lord God can do favorable things for you If you see the Bible I mean it's all affliction there will be a way open for them In same Corinthians it is said To escape from a trial the Lord will also make a way for us Though you may go amidst lot of problems Even amidst the struggle the Lord will make a way for you to escape
One Corinthians 10:13 Manuscherukne neledugra sodanayy ellamal veerey sodanayy ungalakken neledavillay Devan unmayilavara irukkaraar ungal thraniyikku meelavu ningal sodikka paduvathirkka avar idam kodamal Sodanayy thangathakadaa gusodanayodukooda adirkka tapikulumbadiana pokkayy mundakuvar
Here it is said that the Lord will make a way to escape We cannot say everything will be favorable Of course there will be adverse situation But God will make a favorable way there God will make a situation for him to go there Nothing is impossible with God What is impossible to man is possible with God Though no one helps you Lord will raise a person there Prophet Jeremiah was cast into a well It was a well with the mirey clay Just if you moves one leg it will go deeper If he moves another leg further it will go deeper He was going on trying but he was immersing And he was much sorrowful And I prophesy to the kings So prophesy prophesy to the people Many prophecies were fulfilled And many praised But now finally I am in the mirey pit I pray no answer I cry unto the Lord no answer I feel Lord has forsaken Can't God hear my voice I am in the mirey well He was lamenting like that Whom shall be called And whom he addresses children and people are not found now Every move was taking him deeper He understood that he would be drowned like that I don't know whether the prophecies will be fulfilled When he was found in a final stage And Ethiopian told the king He was not an Israelite but an Ethiopian And Ethiopian had gone And told the king You had cast him into the well You have cast him into the mirey He is drowning there He doesn't have any food or anything He would die Suddenly he informed the king And the Ethiopian's name is Yabat Malek And the name of that Ethiopian was Yabat Malek The meaning of that name is the worker of God He informed the king Then king told him to lift him out An adverse situation but a person not related to that their rope was sent inside I am not related to that To all God works like that In whatever situation you are found the Lord is powerful to open a favorable door for you Second Corinthians second chapter And when I came there there also the door was opened unto me of the Lord
Furthermore when I came to draw us to preach Christ's gospel Furthermore, when I came to throw us to preach Christ's gospel, and the door was opened unto me of the Lord.
The Lord had opened the favorable door for him. Not only in one place. In another place also, the Lord opened the door. Why the Lord has opened the door? Understand clearly. The only reason the Lord opening the door is, we have to speak the words of life. Now you see this. The Lord has kept the door open. Many can go and do ministry. Can do the jail ministry. And do the hospital ministry. Can do the college ministry. Can do the ministry at road. You can do tracks ministry. The Lord has kept the doors open for you, why you do not speak the words of life? Sometimes there will be some resistance. For that, you should not simply run away. They ministered in a village. They started beating. And when the fourth believer was caught, he said that I have children, please spare me. Then he asked, why did you come? If you come here, you should get blows. I know some believers are beaten for the Lord. A believer, he went to Tindigal with a megaphone. He would come here also. Pastor Joel would be allowing him to speak and enjoy his speech. And when he was ministering there, one person beat him and snatched everything from him. He called me over phone. He had beaten me. He had snatched away even the megaphone, I do not know what to do. I said, okay, let's pray. After fifteen minutes. And the mic had been written, and now I am preaching in the next street, he said. If the spirit of gospel comes on us, we will preach not in this street, in another street. Can we do so? Why the Lord opens the favorable door? And that you may do the ministry in this land. Nehemia 935. What is said here? Nehemia 935. They have not served thee in the large and fat land. How many of you do the ministry in this open mothera? To how many people you can preach about Jesus? Do you have the courage? Or the faith with you? Our people visit the jewelry shop and also the textile shop. And they give a shopper. They give the big shopper a bag. And they will give that shopper. Chennai silks. And our believers carry the bag, and whether they see this person or not, but that bag that is advertising. And you are purchasing something with your money, but he makes you an advertising board. And you demand more bags and you carry that. But we feel shy to advertise Jesus and even we hide the Bible. The spirit of the Lord is grieved, saying that in this large and fat mothera, you are not ministering for me. You do the ministry if it is, there are adverse situations. And as far as possible, do the ministry of God. You preach the words of life. You preach the Lord who saved you. And speak about the Lord who anointed you. You say that he delivered you from the sin. You say the Lord did miracles for you. It's not wrong to say so. And what the Lord says, you say. The Lord has kept you a favorable door that you may preach the words of life. The Lord can open the favorable door in your business. The Lord can open the favorable door in your family. In Joshua 18:3, what does he say? The land is open, and why are you slack to inherit that? To own this land to Jesus, you should not be slack and lazy. First, the Lord will open the doors of prison for you. And your bands will be loosed. If you believe today, the Lord can do that for you. If the Lord loses your bands, what you have to do back to him. The Lord has decided to do a great thing for you. The Prophet told Naiman to immerse someone times in Jordan. But he refused. He started. But a servant came there. If we are asked you to do something great, you would have accepted to do. He advised him that it is a simple concept to immerse, and immediately he got enlightened and immersed. Has not God done miracles to you? The time to preach has come. You should not suppress the words of life. Our people will conduct seminars in a very grand manner. In the election competition also. But if you are asked to speak about Jesus here, they will tremble. The mystery behind God opening the door is, what you have to do back to the Lord is, you have to speak the words of life. The third door the Lord is going to open for you. Acts 14th chapter. 27th verse. Acts 14:27.
And when they were come and gathered the church together, they rehearsed all that God has done with them, and how he had opened the door of faith unto the Gentiles.
God opens the door of faith for you. Many are not able to receive all things because of this unbelief. They will pray for one hour, but they won't have faith. I give an evidence from the Bible. In Acts 11 chapter, we find Peter in the prison. And the members prayed for him. Angel of God descended and delivered him. Also, delivered Peter came to the house where they were praying. But the house was locked. Now he knocked at the door. Who prayed? Only these people prayed. What did they pray? What was the prayer? Lord, you deliver him. This night itself, you deliver him. Today, it's a two miracle. To open the prison. And now itself, you're releasing. Four monthly, they prayed. And hearing the prayer, he descended, delivered them, and brought him at the doorstep. And he is knocking at the door. And none opened. And there was this rod. And peeped through the key hole. She was very happy. Who was standing at the door? It was Peter. And they sent an informed, event an inform. All those who are praying said, how it would be possible for him to come? How he would come? And tomorrow, he is going to be killed. And he is tied up there. How he would come? And there were ways among them. What did he say? Probably the angel of Peter. Angel should he knock at the door and come? They were speaking like that, but none opened. What was their hope? What's your prayer? How is your prayer? And we would pray for one hour, and they will say that. We can allow him to remain in that way, if he says that he is in the same condition. No use of prayer without work. Today, the Lord is going to open the door of faith for you. The biggest sin is that unbelief. If there is unbelief, even Jesus cannot work there. Due to their unbelief, Jesus could not conduct many miracles there. What is said in Hebrews? And be careful that none of you have. The heart with unbelief. If you have that, you will face. Take heed lest there be in any of you an evil heart of unbelief in departing from the living God. Of course, you are a believer. But when you come into unbelief, you depart from the living God. Unbelief will convert your heart an evil heart. And that is the terrible thing. In Mark 16th chapter. And two offenses rebuked by Jesus. And unbelief is an evil spirit. We cannot do anything with the unbelievers. And they are not unsaved people, but here with the name believers. You believe that the Lord can do everything for you? That there is God. Believe that he will give reward to those who seek him. Jesus asked the person once. Do you believe that I can heal you? Do you trust that I can heal you? Jesus asked in one place like that. And he who asked whether he desires to be healed. And can you, do you believe that I can heal you? In one place, he asked whether he desires to be healed. Another place, he asked, do you believe that you will be healed? Indeed, Lord, I believe. If you believe, you can see the glory of God. How many of you are struggling with unbelief? Many workers and believers are attacked by unbelief. But today, the Lord says, he is going to approve the door of unbelief, and he is going to keep the door of belief in you. Father was praying for the child. And Jesus was not there. And workers were there. And they prayed with them. No answer. And we prayed to the workers, nothing happened. Then Jesus asked. If you can believe, it will come to happen to you. If you believe, I can heal your child now. And he started trying. In Mark 9:24. And with tears, with loud voice, he said, Lord, I believe, help thou my. In the sickness, you have had unbelief. In the struggle, you had unbelief. Amazing, some pains you had unbelief. But God is grieved of you. And you may also. But today, the Lord opens the door of faith for you. Whatever appeared before eyes were negative. Today, may the Lord open the eyes of faith as well as the doors for you. Paul clearly says that the door of faith was opened. When the door of faith opens for you, miracles will start working. And only there, the workers can work. How many of you realize the Lord is working with you to open the doors of faith for you? Don't be with the negative thoughts in unbelief always. You are understanding, and experience may say that it's impossible. Of course, it is impossible. If God is the certainty, it will come to happen, that's the truth. You realize the difference between man and God. At any situation, God can work. And doctors confess that it is impossible with that medicine. After some period, they will say that you pray and call unto your God. Because medical has finished, completed. And you have an opportunity that is in the hands of the Lord. He has the breath of all the persons who has the breath in the nostrils. When he comes. And cancer or any other sickness will not be there. It will depart. Because he is the. The master of all life. And he is the master of all life. And your time, and it is in your hand. Today, the Lord opens the doors of faith for you. When he opens the door of faith, miracle will happen. The work of faith is miracle. The next work of faith is miracle. The next work of faith is science. You have to speak the words of living. And I got shocked when some people. When I go for the. And there will be testimonies before the message. And some testimonies will be dummy testimonies. As our people say something, they will be saying. as our people say something they will be saying to show that there is an important believer some people in the month and the meeting they will come and simply say something when we hear some testimony the faith will grow in us if you listen to the message of pastor sp earnest at the middle of the message if it is stopped they will go and even ready to quicken the dead people if he is commanded to go and quicken somebody is dead he will immediately do and that's how he would be feeding and they would be feeding divine healing and they will boost up that similarly pastor don was like and they called to pray for a woman from nagargoye and he went to pray that woman could not walk old believer a good believer when he prayed pastor don has come to pray for you and he went and spoke he asked whether he could pray or pray do you also pray many big pastors had prayed do you also pray what's the meaning many had prayed nothing had happened do you also pray and go he said sorry I cannot pray now and he left and she apologized later he said I cannot pray for a person who doesn't have faith then she realized shedding tears if you are a bold believer if you if you simply say that you also pray and go what happened finally she shed tears and she's he started preaching he spoke about faith gradually he spoke about faith one particular limit he understood faith had come into immediately he prayed and she stood up without faith if you pray no use in acts fourteen the chapter in the same chapter paul was preaching a person who was crippled since his birth he was listening to what paul was speaking when the message was going on and he perceived that faith had come in him he beheld that he had the faith to be healed stand up right on thy feet he said when you listen to the message of power will come in today the lord breaks all the doors of unbelief he opens the doors of faith for you what the devil says it's impossible or standing on the knees at home you say that it will happen you say your child will be mended and changed instead of saying god save you say that since you are going to save I praise thee lord you go to the next step don't stand in the wrong steps for thirty years this is the same prayer of saving your husband you say I praise thee for you touch him in a place a boy was missing and some saw the vision and said we prayed after some time the prayer changed we called the parents if anyone asks about your son don't say he had not come you say he will come and be believed you say god will bring you confess your faith that's important and it is it should be confessed with the mouth when you confess the faith he came and that's the deed of faith faith of deed is dead this morning the lord changes the doors of unbelief and opens the door of faith for you for the israelites the lord opened the door of heaven though the doors in this earth will not though many doors are shut merciful god is ready to open the doors of heaven for psalm seventy eight twenty three though he had commanded the clouds from above and opened the doors of heaven in english it is beautifully said as heaven god opens the doors of heaven for us doors of hell will be shut and the doors of man will be shut but the lord opens the doors of heaven for you when the doors of heaven are opened all your needs will be met you will not be hungry you will not thirst you will not lack the confession of now I don't have you won't confess saying that I don't have anything when you inquire you will not find anything lacking in home the lord will fill your treasures to fill you the lord opens the doors of heaven for your sake in malachi third chapter what's the secrecy of opening the doors of heaven what's the secrecy of opening the windows of heaven and it is there in your tithe in your life if you are offering the tithe three ten tithe means it doesn't mean money you understand the truth tithe means it doesn't denote only the money or the salary from which you give tithe tithe that you have to offer in the time you have and exactly they will calculate the tithe from the salary and bring it in an envelope on one part it's right in a day god gives you twenty four hours from this twenty four hours you have to offer tithe what's meant by that what is that minimum two and a half hours in two and a half hours you have to give the tithe in the prayer or in the ministry very simply you can four to five morning prayer at night ten to eleven another hour then thirty four hours two hundred and forty minutes just if you pray for twenty five minutes personal prayer you have offered the tithe in time this is the fact if the doors of the heaven has to open for you then you will be blessed without room next pharisee says I fast twice a week what's the meaning twenty one times we eat in a week school children will eat twenty eight times by four thirty pm if generally let's have and the pharisee gives time two hours two hours not two times two times he gives us time out of twenty one times we eat we should give tithe quaranty the bible tells you minimum three times we have to fast and that's the tithe in this if the food is not good at home and if you don't eat out of anger that is not fasting you understand clearly some will not inform that they had food outside but they will pretend that they would remain that pretense is not fasting if you fast thrice in a week that means in the matter of food you are giving tithe to the lord in a day if you pray two and a half hours that means you offer tithe more than that in your learning literally you have to give tithe this is the tithe mentioned in the bible and in this matter if you offer the tithe properly the lord will open the doors of heaven the lord will bless you without room no chance for them to cultivate and keep in the granary because they were on the journey and their vision was about cannon of milk and honey here they didn't have time to sow reap and gather in the granary opening the doors of heaven from there he sent the bread of the angels to them the lord drew the blew the wind and gave pills to them to eat a sleep the lord is powerful to feed you but you offer tithe properly the believers you are here you try and test and give the tithe in these three things and see whether the doors of heaven are opened or not daily for two and a half hours you pray in a week you fast thrice and in your earning even it is five rupees you give tithe in that even lord gives you lacs you give tithe in that I need much what I will do pastor is in need of money now I require one crore to develop mother ministry I need ten crores and before today I need one crore what will I do will I give the subscription I will be holding unto him and demanding money from him and he was there was some old pastor called mutaya and because of his steadfast faith he was called muradan mutaya and if you can't accept prayer till he gets answer you will receive only after receiving the prayer a man stubborn in prayer suppose I pray for one crore somehow I need one crore how it will come how it will come will somebody from abroad come and give also that will happen that's only second chance if I need one crore first thing what the lord will do for me only if you don't do that for all the believers too the lord should give ten crores only if the believers get ten crores you will come with one crore to me if I need ten crores god should give a hundred crores to the believers do you think that I am speaking in a different way this is the fact when our needs increase the lord blesses you and when I am in need the lord will bless you I will break the roof and give you but when you receive ten crores and if you don't bring the lord will send somebody else and he will give the ten crores I have checked and tested and when the need of the ministry increases the lord will give tenfold he will open the doors of heaven for you the lord who opened for the israelites is unchanging for today and forever he is ready to open the door for you if he opens none can close that's the power of god if he opens nobody can close with a little sin you didn't deny and you confess so I keep you the open door and necessity of the ministry is on the part of your blessing if you begin to pray for the blessings of the ministry there will be showers on you when the showers of blessings pour on you then the treasury granary will be filled here that's why the bible says today the lord is speaking you to open the doors of heaven you follow two and a half hours prayer from today from today you fast thrice you be faithful in the
கத்தர் உன்னை அனேகத்துல அதிகாரியாய் மாறுவா?
The Lord will make you master over many things.
ஒன்னு சம்வேல், மூனா மதிகாரம்.
First Samuel, third chapter.
15 வசனத்துல ஆலயத்தின் கதவு தெரக்கப்படும் நேரம்.
In the fifteenth verse, it is said about the time of the doors of the temple opening.
சாமுவேல் விடீர்காலம் மட்டும் படுத்திருந்து, கத்துடிய ஆலயத்தின் கதவுகளை திரந்தான், சாமுவேல் ஏளிக்கு அந்த தருசனத்தை அறிவிக்கப் பயந்தான். And Sam will lay until the morning and open the doors of the house of the Lord, and Sam will fear to show early the visit.
கத்தர் கத்துடிய ஆலயத்தின் கதவுகளை சாமுவேல் திரந்தா.
Sam will open the doors of the house of the Lord.
இது உன்னுடைய ஜீவியத்தைப் பட்டி தேவன் சொல்லுகிற ஒரு வார்த்தை.
This is a word uttered by the Lord about your life.
உன் ஜீவியத்தை தெரக்கவெண்டிய ஒரு நேரம்.
It's the time to open your life.
நீங்களே தேவனுடைய ஆலயம்.
You are the temple of God.
நீங்கள் தேவனுடைய ஆலயமாக இருந்தால், தேவன் உங்களை மகிமைப்படுத்துவா.
If you are the temple of God, God will glorify you.
தேவனுடைய ஆலயம் பரிசுத்தமாயிருக்குறது.
Temple of God is holy.
நல்லா நீங்க புரிஞ்சுக்குங்க, இந்த நாக்கிலே தேவன் பரிசுத்தத்தின் கதவை உனக்கு தெரக்கப்போகுறா.
And you understand, God is going to open the doors of holiness.
பல பாவத்துல உனக்கு விடுதலை இல்லாமல் இருக்கலாம்.
You may not have deliverance in many sins.
பல சோல்விகளில் நீ அடைப்பட்டு கிடக்கலாம்.
You may be caught in many defeats.
பலவிதமான தடுமாற்றங்கள் உனக்குள் இருக்கலாம்.
Many from stumbling and staggering.
சூழ்நெலைக்கு கைதி போல நீ மாற்றப்பட்டு இருக்கலாம்.
You may be like the prisoner.
உனக்குள்ள பல விழுகைகள் வந்துகொண்டே இருக்கலாம்.
Many falling wood accor.
நீ எவ்வளோ மூய்ச்சி எடுத்தும், நீ அதிலிருந்து ஜயத்தை பெறமுடியாமல் தவித்துக்கொண்டு இருக்கலாம்.
So you try not able to get deliverance.
அனல் இன்றைக்கு கத்தர் உனக்கு ஆலயத்தின் கதவுகளை, பரிசுத்தத்தின் கதவுகளை கத்தர் உனக்கு தெரக்குறா.
Today the Lord opens the doors of the house of the Lord, the holiness.
என்னிடால் ஆலயத்துக்கு ஒரு பிரமாணம் இருக்குறதாக பைபில் சொல்லுகிறது.
The Bible says there is a law to the temple.
தேவனுடைய ஆலயத்துடைய பிரமாணம் என்ன?
What's the law of the temple of God?
ஐசேக்கில் மாபதி 332.
Ezekiel forty-two twelve.
ஆலயத்தினுடைய பிரமாணம் என்னவென்றால், மலையுச்சின்மேல் சுச்சிலும், அதின் எல்லையங்கும் மிகவும் பரிசுத்தமாயிருக்கும், இதுவே ஆலயத்தினுடைய பிரமாணம். This is the law of the house. Upon the top of the mountain, the whole limit thereof roundabout shall be most holy, because behold, this is the law of the house.
4312 இந்த வார்த்தை தெளிவாக இருக்குறாது.
In forty-three twelve, the word is clear.
ஆலயத்தினுடைய பிரமாணம் என்ன?
What's the law of the house of God?
ஆலயத்துக்கு ஒரு பிரமாணம் இருக்குறாது.
The house as a law.
ஆலயத்தின் கதவு தெரக்குறது நா, பரிசுத்தத்தின் கதவு, ஏன்னிடால் ஆலயத்துடைய பிரமாணம், மலையின் உச்சி எல்லாம் பரிசுத்தமாயிருக்கும்.
The law of the mountain is all the most, everything is holy.
உன்னுடைய ஜீவியத்துல பேச்சி, நெனைவு, சிந்தை, தோற்ற, உணர்வு, வாஞ்சை, விருப்பம், எல்லாம் பரிசுத்தமாயிருக்கும்.
In your life, all your appearance, behavior, conversation will become holy.
இன்னைக்கு எத்தனைவே அது விச்வாசிக்கிறேன்?
How many of you believe this?
கத்தர் நீக்கு உனக்கு ஆலயத்தின் கதவு தெரக்குறான்னா, கோயிலுப்புல வருதுக்கு கதவு தெரக்குறான் என்னிச்சர் கூடாது.
It's not literally opening the house of the temple to come inside.
என்னிடால் கடந்த நாக்கிலே உனக்கு ஆலயத்தின் கதவுகள் பூட்டப்பட்ட சூழ்நெலைகள் இருந்தது.
In the previous days, the doors of the temple were closed for you.
அப்போசல் 21:30 நான் பார்க்கும்பொழுது.
In Acts twenty-one thirty.
அங்க என்ன சொல்லப்படுறாது?
And what is said here?
அப்போசல் 21:30.
Acts twenty-one thirty.
You may be not having deliverance in your character. You may not have deliverance from your habits. Some bondage in some things. But you believe this. But when you got delivered, you have to speak the words of life. Next. Acts 12 chapter. In the 10th verse. For the sake of Peter God to open the iron gate.
When they were past the first and the second ward, they came unto the iron gate, the leaden unto the city, which opened to them of this accord, and they went out and passed down through one street and forth.
When they came near the iron gate, it opened automatically. And there is difference in doors. We have us. There are different types of doors. 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 And this denotes on a rough. Iron gate cannot be opened. And this shows that many things do not happen to many people. Many things happen but what they expect doesn't happen. The common trend, present trend. If we pray for anybody, they get deliverance but for me no deliverance. If you go and pray for sick people, they are healed. Immediate deliverance. If we pray for somebody, God gives. But in my matter, God keeps quiet. That is the iron gate. The first door opens, second door opens, the Bible says, the iron gate also will open on its own accord. What is impossible to man is possible. God can open any door at any place. At any place, God can do miracles. The smugglers of God. Have you read that book? And what he would smuggle. His ministry is to smuggle Bible from. And when the Lord says he will take the printed bibles in a car. There will be lot of check posts. But they would open his vehicle and see. Not once, often. And all will open his vehicle and see and they will be blinded and they allow him to go. The smuggler of God, it is available in Word of Christ. His ministry was to preach the truth in that land of iron gate. God is the Lord who opens the iron gates. Whether it is a brass grate, he will open. In Isaiah 45 4. And it's a very favorite verse. Somehow he will break the iron doors and give the treasure. Vengala kadavugali udai thu, iruputhaai paalgalai murithu, antaharathil idukra pokishangalaiyum, olipidanthil idukra podailgalaiyum unakku kodupen. Even our believers are fond of getting some. But the following verse says that I will give this to Jacob, my son. And here it is said that he is the Lord who breaks the brass doors. Today as the Lord, God who opens the doors for you. If you are in the prison, he will open the door for you. Today the Lord will open the doors of heaven. The Lord will open the favorable doors. He will open the door of faith for you. He will open the holiness, that the door of the temple. And finally, he will open the hard door, that's the iron gate for you. Above all. Second Chronicles 422. What is said here? The Lord will open the inner door of the most holy place. Inner doors of the most holy place. Hebrews 10 chapter says that Jesus, he rent his body. Hebrews 10 19. Jesus on the cross, he rent the flesh that is the veil and there at the same time, the veil in the temple of God also was rent. Renting the flesh. And he opened a new and living way. And what does it show? It shows the doors opening a forest that we may enter into the heaven. As soon as we close the eyes. The Lord gives us the blessing of entering into the inner door of the heaven. We do not know when the death will come. And it will be coming either before or after. It will coming before and behind. When chance comes, it will meet you. Next second, the inner doors of the most holy place will open and you will enter. In 2nd Peter 1 chapter. 2nd Peter 11. The entrance into the eternity shall be given to you abundantly. What a beautiful word. The time, gather the saints who have made a covenant with me by the sacrifice. And who can go there? If anyone, who goes, the door will open. There is a word in the song. Open the doors for the righteous nation that keep the truth may enter. 26 2. No local nation or community will enter there. No community or nation would go there. Those who do this cast discrimination. Considering caste, if you are here, you can't enter. Walk together with the righteous nation so that the doors will open for you. The Lord opens the doors for you. Not only opening the iron gate for you. Not only opening the doors of heaven. Not only opening the favorable door. There is a word in the song. Open the doors for the righteous nation that keep the truth may enter. 26 2. No local nation or community will enter there. No community or nation would go there. Those who do this cast discrimination. Considering caste, if you are here, you can't enter. Walk together with the righteous nation so that the doors will open for you. The Lord opens the doors for you. Not only opening the iron gate for you. Not only opening the doors of heaven. Not only opening the favorable door. Not only making you holy. He opens the doors to gather you in the glorious nation. This is the thing God is going to do for you. But what you can do for the Lord. That's what the Bible says, speak the words of life. You speak the words of God. Speak the salvation of God. Speak about the life of faith outside. Speak about apostolic doctrine. Speak about the deeper doctrine. Speak about the 19. Say that you are saved. Say that you are anointed. You say that you can speak in unknown tongues. Say, Jesus healed you. Why can't you say? And in the house of Naaman, a last from Israel was a slave there. And she was just a maid servant as a captain. A small damsel. What did she say? She says that if the master goes to Israel, he will be healed by the Lord of Israel. And the wife informed that to the husband. And the husband told the king. A big host had started. You should not say that you are unworthy. Many say no link between the life and. You may be unworthy and it may be impossible but you have to serve. I used to think. The blind people do the ministry. Handicapped people do the ministry. And they will ask why God doesn't heal him. Then God, it's not so. And those who have eyes do not do the ministry. One who is alright with the limbs. And to confirm these people with the weak ones, I do my ministry. That's the truth. How many of you speak the words of life? Why can't you say? A blind person would testify in our. What beautiful songs and testimony. Why we don't say? Just think of it. How many of you speak the living words? What's meant by the words of life? First John 11. John speaks about the words of life.
That which was from the beginning, which we have heard, which we have seen with our eyes, which we have looked upon and our hands have handled, of the word of life.
In one word description, he speaks about the word of life beautifully. It was there since the beginning. And which we have heard once. Which you have seen with our eyes. And looked upon when hanging on the cross. And when in disbelief, we touched with our hand. We preach that word of life to you. How he beautifully describes that the character nature, Jesus here. Jesus is a living word. Not boasting saying that our church is big, that is not the word of life but speaking about Jesus is word of life. Don't speak about the church but speak about Jesus. What does John 11 say? What is said here? In the beginning, there was word. And the word was with God. And the word was God. And there was life in the word. And the life was light of men. You preach this word of life. You speak about Jesus. Don't light the lamp and hide it in the bushel. You start and make all nations the disciples. When you are looked at, they should say that you are a Christian. In the appearance, they should say that you are a Pentecostal man. You should reveal yourself as an epistle. You preach the living word. In John 6 chapter, Peter says that you have the words of life, where shall we go? About the word of life, you have to testify. In somehow, you would reveal the Lord. First John. About testifying, it is said in the second verse. And the word of life was manifested. And that was with the father. It was revealed to us. About that eternal life, we are witness. And we preach that to you. In John 4. To the Samaritan woman, Jesus spoke. In a simple manner, he touched her. And she was shaken. Now she ran into the door. And what happened in my life, one person. You come and see him. Come and see whether he is Christ. Come and see the word of life. Come and see who gives the waters of life. The whole city. And according to the Bible, she was alright but according to that place, she was an adulteress woman. But she did the ministry. That's why Bible says if you are right and if you don't do the ministry, the publicans and the adulterers will enter the kingdom of God. And preach out the life, word of life. Lord calls you to testify about the word of life outside. In 1 John 1 5. We declare that message, God is light and that is our speciality. And gospel means good news. If you preach gospel, you are giving good tidings. If you preach the gospel, you are talking about the image of God. In Corinthian 4 chapter. 2nd Corinthian 4 verse. The light of the glorious gospel of Christ, that is the image of. If you preach the gospel, then you have spoken about the image of Jesus. This morning, the Lord opens the doors for you. For your sake, he opens the door, in return, you have to speak the word of life. Those who say, Lord, if you open the door, I will speak the word of life, you close your eyes and stand on your knees. And to whom the Lord opened the doors for them, the Lord, Jesus comes to open the doors of heaven also. And God who opens the doors for the nation that keep the truth, he is coming now. You desire that the Lord should open the door. And the Lord desires that you have to speak the word of life. These are the two parts of a physical balance. The Lord will open the door for you, when you come out, you have to say, Jesus lives. When you complete the race, you have to say that I have preserved their faith. Those who desire like that, stand on the knees, close your eyes. Submit to the word of God for two minutes. The hand that delivered the apostles then. The same hand that delivered Peter. The same arm that delivered Paul and Silas. The same arm of the Lord which opened the doors for the people of God. It's going to open the door for you also. Which door you want to be opened, you say that to the Lord. Because only you know the path in which you go. Only you know about your temptation. You may not be sharing that with others. But today you share it with God. Lord, the experience of imprisonment must should be open for. Lord, everything is unfavorable for me, please open me a favorable door. I have heard that you do favorable things and open doors for many people and it's not happening in my life, please do it for me and open the door. Lord, all the doors are shut for me in the world but you open the doors of heaven for me. Many years have gone since I came into this way but there are many defeats and failures, open me the doors of holiness, God. Many doors do open for me but certain doors are shut for me and they are like iron doors, you please break and open the iron door for me, Lord. Lord, even if I close my eyes today, the doors of the most holy place should open for me. Just you kneel for two minutes, it's not a sin. It denotes submission. It denotes that even in your weakness. Lord knows your situation. The Lord is going to open the doors for you today. I believe. If there are 500 people here, 500 angels have come here. How many of you believe this? The Lord at this 12 hour is opening the door that is shut for you. He is opening the doors of heaven for you. The power of the Lord has come to open the door for you. Amen. Those who say that once wherever I went, all the doors opened for me, God opened the doors for me, if you have that experience, put up your hands. And that God was faithful to me then. Though it's not open for others, it would open for me. But when I was defeated in my life. When backsliding came. I realized again, many doors were shut back. But today, again, the Lord becomes you. God who is unchanging for yesterday, today and forever. Lord who is looking at you. God who doesn't forget you. One who doesn't hate you. God who gave promises to you. Who called and led you. Who has kept you in his palm. Today, again, he opens the doors for you. Open the eyes of faith. You will see the shut doors opening for you. Amen. If there is anyone feeling that you are paralyzed and inactive and doors do not open for you, please put up your hands. The word of God will not lie. Do you know? If the word or the message about opening the door comes, it will not go back without opening the door. The word of God will not return empty. Only after fulfilling for which purpose it is sent, it will go back. Today God asks you one question. I will open any door for you. You are my son. You are my daughter. You are my servant. You belong to me. Certainly, I will open the door for you. When you go, automatically the doors will open. You are mine. Amen. How many of you have prepared yourselves to speak the word of life? How many of you can say? Those who have decided to speak the word of life without season, you put up your hands. You understand clearly. Whether you speak out the word of life or not. It's true, the Lord opens the door for you. And second part, you have to speak, if you fail to do, that is your mistake. But you speak the word of life. It will be going on opening for you continually. Throughout your life, the Lord will be opening the door. Till the end of your race, the doors will be going on opening.